I want to call to order the August 10th Board Meeting for the Wichita Public Schools. Wichita School, Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please stand with me to do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item?
Communications.
I'm seeing no one that's interested today. Next item?
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Hey, welcome. How are you, sir?
I'm good. I hope everybody's doing well. President Beilefeld, Board Members, President Logan. The report from Service Employees International Union was that we missed you guys Tuesday night when we were out here in front of AMAC. I was hoping you'd put on a sun hat or some sunscreen and come out and talk to us and just mingle a little bit, but the employees went out and had a very cathartic experience. And I think we, I think one of the things that was good was we got a lot of support from the community. A lot of people that were driving by were honking. Our sign said, "Respect us, protect us." And I think that you guys know from our discussions last year that those were some of the things that we were hoping that this school year would be a little tighter on discipline. Parents would understand that we're past COVID and that everybody that works here is here because they love the kids and it's not because of the pay or anything else. They really care about what happens to the kids and their futures. And, you know, just to some extent, we were demanding respect. And I think that we need to continue to do that with parents, students, and our coworkers and make sure that we're treating each other with respect and that if we have a problem that we're going through the proper channels and that we're not degrading one another because nobody gets up and does this job so that they can be picked on, poked at, or chastised or talked down to. And I think the teachers probably feel the same way and the administrators who have to deal with angry parents feel the same way. So, you know, we all want to get to the same place, but we want it done respectfully. And we hope that the kids will come back with a new attitude and show some more respect towards their teachers and towards the paras and the security officers. And just make sure that we're going back to doing the business of school, which is to educate and make everybody better. So, or at least autonomous, so they can grow up and make their own decisions at the same level as everybody else. So, that's really the big thing for us and we look forward to the school year starting. I know a lot of people are tired and been moving a lot of books and a lot of computers and custodians are a little frustrated. Not all their buildings got done the way they had hoped to have happen. And, you know, I know you guys approved 800,000 for the subcontractor for the custodians for Citywide, but as a spokesperson for the custodians, I can tell you that they're not happy with the majority of the workers. There are some people who work for Citywide who are doing a great job and they would be great USD 259 employees, but you can't, of course, poach their employees. But some of them that are coming in are not doing a great job and they're only doing exactly what they're supposed to do and they're not communicating with the staff very well. So, as we move forward with this, I would ask you to make sure that whatever the contract says with those subcontractors, that it gets enforced and you get your money's worth because Luke told you last time, we can't get subcontractors that are better than our full-time employees. And I know we're having a terrible time getting people in and I don't know exactly how we're going to fix that, but, you know, we have paraprofessionals who'd be willing to work the other, they only work 36 hours. They might like to work one night a week as a custodian and help out with those problems. So, just as a suggestion, let's try and work within if we can because the people that are coming outside, I don't think they're being checked the way they ought to. I don't think they're getting the same background checks that the people that we employ are. And I think for the safety of our children and the buildings and all the items in there, making sure things are safe and stay where they're supposed to, we need to be enforcing those contracts with the roofing companies, everybody we deal with, because the workers feel like we have to go back and fix a lot of that stuff. So, if you're, if you're going to subcontract, stick it to them if they don't do what they're supposed to. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't think you're going to get an argument from anybody on this board that we respect, we need respect and to protect our employees, no matter whom those employees are. So, thank you. Next item?
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Board Members. We're, we're almost done with our voting on our contracts and I've heard really, really good things. The teachers seem very pleased. We will have those results for you tomorrow at 4:00. One area, though, where we feel like there's more work to be done is enormous workload and the lack of time to accomplish the work that our teachers need to get done. Even though negotiations have concluded, we still are going to come to administration and to you to ask for the teachers to have the time that they so desperately need. One example, which I know I visited with Superintendent about, was the annual sign-off videos. Instead of including the annual sign-off videos in in-service days, some buildings are having teachers view these annual sign-off videos on their own time. And that's troublesome for our new teachers because these have like our FERPA requirements, bloodborne pathogens, things that are important to the safety and wellbeing of our staff and students. I know that Superintendent Beilefeld said he would, we would make a plan for next year, but I really want to make sure that our teachers are given time for things that may impact their employment and may impact the safety of our students and our staff. It took me 72 minutes to complete reading every page and watching every video. And a lot of these are BOE policies that you guys put into place, social media policies, different things that people could, you know, lose their employment when we have to come and meet with Sean if there's an issue with a teacher. It relates a lot of times to these policies. It's important that they know them. It's important for their employment. So, I appreciate having that conversation and working for next year to make sure that our teachers get that time. One thing we brought to negotiations that we discussed was our teachers, they're, they've been desperately begging for more planned time. They bring home so much work. And, I mean, we've done surveys on it. As a teacher, I can tell you, you bring, you bring home a lot. And at the end of the day, you have phone calls to make. There's just never enough time for all of it. And so, that was something that we had asked for this year. And we do, in elementary, I know teachers get 90 minutes of scheduled PD each week. And we have asked, can you give our elementary teachers 20 or 30 minutes of that time? It would not cost you anything. Can you give them 20, 30 minutes of that time so they can, not on their lunch break, make phone calls home to parents? Maybe finish grading a test and get that back to their, their students in a, in a quick manner? So, that's something else that I, I'm going to continue to advocate for. I heard that today you are looking at a policy that will tighten up the existing cellphone policy and put a focus on learning in the classroom and we appreciate that. We think it definitely needs some tightening up. So, thank you for discussing that today. That's it.
Thank you, Katie. Next item?
Executive Session?
Diane?
I move the Board recess into an executive session for the purposes of consulting with the Board's attorney on a matter involving litigation, which is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to the KSA 75-4319B2. And the Board will return from executive session in this room at approximately 12:25.
Sarah Second?
I second.
It was moved by Diane and seconded by Kathy that we move to executive session. Please raise your hand, vote for it. Motion passes 7-0. We are in executive session. I call the meeting back to order. Diane?
I move that we extend the recess for another about 15 minutes. We'll return to this room at 12:45.
Second. Okay, those in favor? Motion passes 4-0. We will be back at 12:45. I call the meeting no order from executive session. Next item?
Next item, Consent?
Ernestine, do you have anything to pull?
No, nothing to pull.
Okay. Stan?
No consent items to pull.
I have nothing to pull. Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
Hazel?
I have nothing to pull.
Julie?
I have nothing to pull.
Kathy?
Oh, great. I do. I have questions on about a few things. C, under Finance. Three, Positive Rhythm Productions, the renewal.
Okay, I'm sorry, say that number again.
Yes, ma'am. Four C. Five C.
Right.
Four C. And then F, under Miscellaneous, number three. And then when we get to Policy and letter, that's a different item. So, okay, just.
Yeah, those are, we'll take those up individually.
Just those, just those two.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any item titles again, please?
Under Consent, C, Finance. And then under Miscellaneous, number three.
Okay, do I hear a motion for the other items to be approved?
I'll make a motion for the rest of the consent items to be approved.
Okay.
Second.
It was moved by Julie and seconded by Stan that we approve the other items on the consent agenda. Please raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Kathy, let's start with C.
Okay, under the Treasury warrants, under Prime Fit, which is on page 14 of 20, we have the allocations that are there. Are these also going to be allocated for the next school year?
Hello, Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Treasury warrants are actually the checks we write. So, this isn't an allocation. These are invoices that we've paid Prime Fit in the month of July.
And is that normally the amount that is paid monthly to Prime Fit or is this just for summer school?
I would, we would need to pull open the invoices, but we can do that fairly quickly if you want us to do that.
No, that's okay. That's just my only question. So, I'd like to make a motion to.
Okay.
Do number C.
Motion to approve.
Prove it.
Five, C, C.
Second.
Made by Kathy, seconded by Ernestine. Please raise your hand if you approve.
Thank you, Susan.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item is F3.
Miscellaneous, three. Okay, under Positive Rhythm Productions, it's a renewal, federal funds ESAR. What will happen to this program next year when ESAR funds are gone? And I thought that we had already allocated a lot of money for restorative practices. And why are we saying yes to more money?
Okay, so, this contracts with Rob Simon, who we've been contacting with, with a few years now, many years now. We are, we have put a lot of money towards restorative practices, as you said. We are just going through the train-the-trainer model to get a number of internal staff trained. We still need this because Rob isn't a, in a building per se. So, if a situation comes up, he's able to go have a restorative circle kind of as needed on an as-needed basis where we've trained, you know, people in this room, assistant principals, principals, counselors. They can't always just drop what they're doing and go facilitate this. To answer your first question about ESAR, I think this is something we're going to continue to monitor, that I'm not sure we will continue to need this down the road. Now, I don't know a deadline for, I'm not to say we won't renew this for, you know, the next few years, but I think our goal is to be completely independent as a district and be able to do all of our restorative practices stuff internally and not need anything else eventually, but we're not there yet.
So, is this 30,000 to train more of our in-house?
No, that's to pay Rob.
To pay Rob.
To do some of our trainings, to conduct circles, to triage as needed, that sort of thing.
And so, you said that it might be a couple of years or so before we're independent from using this? How is it going to be funded if it's going to be a couple of years and our ESAR funds run out next year?
I don't, I don't know that I know the answer to that.
Okay.
But it, you know, it's something that we, I can get back with you on.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, unless Gil, do you, do you know the answer to that specific question?
I'm really concerned about next year and our ESAR funds and if we're saying we're going to keep programs going on using ESAR funds, but there's not going to be any ESAR funds.
Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent, in the past, he was paid out of secondary funds because they were using restorative practices before we got into the full-fledged District Wide. So, we'd have to look at specific funding on, if we were to keep them, obviously, since ESAR is going to go away, we'd have to definitely look at where would the best place to fit if we needed to continue that.
So, are we getting close to becoming independent of this program?
They are doing trainer-trainer model this year as we speak. So, there is a lot of staff members are being trained to be facilitators of circles. And Robert was used a lot this, even last year around non-attendance centers. So, School Service Center, AMAC, when we have certain situations that we wanted to make sure that we, we hurt our staff, but also repairing harm for things that may have occurred. So, we have used them in different dynamics as well as for staffs at specific schools as well.
Well, I've gotten very good feedback from the teachers that I visited this week and they, they love this program and they do see that it is working. And I was very glad to see that. And so, if we can afford to keep it going if we need to, excuse me, that would be great. But if we're close to becoming independent and all being educated and trained on this, let's go forward. So, in light of that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
Sarah Second?
I second it.
It was moved by Kathy and seconded by Ernestine that we approve the F3 item. Please raise your hand if you vote yes. Motion passes 7-0. Next item?
Next item, under Policy, Second Review, Proposed Updates of Administration Policies.
Okay, we do have two policies that are in for a second review, which we vote on them today. It's Policy 1400 and 1425. 1400 is athletics and 1425 is selection of students for participating in student activities. Stan?
I move that we take the adopted proposed changes to Policies 1400 and 1425.
I'll second.
Okay, it was moved by Stan, seconded by Julie. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none. Would you please cast your vote? If you vote yes, raise your right hand. Motion passes 7-0 for those two policies. Next item?
Next item, First Review, Proposed Updates of Administration Policies.
Okay, there are three policies in this group and I would like to pull or vote first on Policy 1806 and P7350, which is reporting to parents on student progress and student trips and transportation. And, and discuss those two and move them into a second read. Is there discussion on those two policies? Kathy?
Yeah. Sorry, getting it together here. On 1806, there are some differences. Here it is. I'm confused with paragraph 17 and 18 on page 3 of 4. So, are we doing SRGs and/or letters or both? Because it talks about on 18, the letter marks A, B, C, D, F, and pass. But then in 17, it just talks about the SRG grading. And so, I'm a little confused as to, I know we're doing SRGs, but why are the letters put in there?
Kelly?
Lauren, do you want to come speak to it? Sorry. I think the answer is we do both, but I don't want to, I don't want to speak in for Lauren, so go ahead.
You're correct. We do both. In the secondary world, we convert the SRG score to a letter grade since that is what people are used to. And there are a lot of folks that want to, you know, calculate the GPA, put that on the transcript, things like that. And so, they get an SRG score and then we use that SRG score to convert it to a letter grade. So, in middle school, they get a letter grade and an SRG score based on that letter grade.
Is that more work for the teachers to do that, to convert that? Or is there a table that they can look at?
The, our student information system does it automatically.
It does it automatically?
Yes.
Okay, great. And, okay, I had 25 and then, oh, could you please tell me what a positive failure is?
Yep, so if, that's typically, we use it in high school. It's a high school terminology. And that's if a student is for sure going to fail a course that is necessary for graduation, we send out positive failure notices. So, for example, hey, Ms. Jones, Timmy's going to fail English 4. Timmy needs English 4 to graduate. So, then we can do some planning around what we're going to do to get Timmy that English 4 credit. So, that's what it's for.
What's positive about that?
Well, it's like positive yes for sure because we send out possible.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we send out possible failure notices. Yeah, hey, if you don't change something, you might fail this course.
Right.
And then we send out positive that, yes, you did.
And line number 30, it's scratched out. Teachers are required to contact parents if a student is in danger of failing. That is scratched out as it was eliminated.
And then if you read further down, then there, it talks a little more specifics about how to contact and what you need to do. So, there's a lot of scratch outs that's in later, later on down that they need to attempt to let parents know.
Okay, it just says the teachers are required to contact parents if a student is in danger of failing as opposed to, never mind.
It's in 27.
27. Yeah, it's above. I was looking below for it. So, it was, okay, I think that answers all of my questions. Thank you very much. I would like to make a, well, it's first, first read, so it's all good.
This will, both of these policies will move to our next Board Meeting for a second read. Now, let's go back to the policy that was in that same grouping, but, but I said skip over it. And that is Policy 1464, Student Behavior Regulations. And we've had several discussions at the Board Table about cell phones. And this policy is actually in, the changes in it is in regards to those kinds of things. Normally, under our Policy 100, we have two reads on a policy, but as a Board, we can make the decision to have only one read and put it into place if we so decide. So, I would like to move that the Board forego a second read of the revisions of Board Policy 1464 and take up the matter of whether to adopt these revisions at today's Board Meeting.
I'd second that.
Is there time for discussion?
We will discuss, there's a motion on the floor. So, I made the motion, Cheryl made the motion, and it was seconded by Julie that we have just one read on this policy. Let's have discussion.
Kathy? Thank you. Under the very first paragraph, I highlighted that violations of the rules and regulations may be subject to disciplinary action and reported to local law enforcement if appropriate. I would like to see the word "may" to "will." So, it would sound like this, violations of the rules and regulations will be subject to disciplinary action instead of "may." Because if we say "may," we're just keeping it open, well, it might and it might not get me in trouble. But, you know, it's just to kind of like close in those boundaries a little bit tighter. And then under disciplinary action and "may be reported to local law enforcement if appropriate," instead of "and reported to." I mean, not every regulation would stipulate having to contact law enforcement if it was violated. Does that make sense, you guys?
So, so basically what you're saying is that you want the "may" changed to a "will" underneath the subject of disciplinary action. But then add the words "may be reported to law enforcement." So, in other words, kids will get some kind of a consequence for their behavior.
Yes.
But it wouldn't necessarily be reporting it to the law.
Correct.
Ernestine?
I can see a situation in which a student is not to have the phone out in class, but suddenly gets a phone call that's an emergency from home. And that the teacher then can make the decision that that is not to have discipline on it, just put it away. You had no, no, you know, I can just, to me, I would rather leave the decision to the adults as opposed to, the children have no choice, but leave the decision on the violation to the teacher, to the administrator, because they may see an extenuating circumstance that the child was not responsible for or they didn't have, have an option on.
And I understand what you're saying, Ernestine. In all fairness to this policy, if, I mean, it's got to be a black and white. Before cell phones, the office was called, a note was sent to the student in the classroom and they could respond in that way.
All right, is there further discussion? Because we have a motion on the floor to have this be a one-read policy instead of two. And we're going to vote on that first and then we'll make a motion on the policy, which your, your changes were really on the policy. So, it's the second motion where they'd be taken into effect. Okay?
Okay.
Is that clear? All right. Again, I made the motion, Julie seconded is, and I'm going to call the question, to have this be a one-read policy instead of a two-read policy. The reason for that is we're about ready to start school. It is much easier to institute a change in something like this before the students arrive because we still have time to do in-service with our teachers and let them know that the policy's changed. If we waited till our next Board Meeting for that, school would have started. It's a much more difficult installation process. So, are we ready to vote? Any other discussion on the one read? Okay? Please raise your right hand if you support the motion to have only one read on the policy. Motion passes 7-0. Now, we're going to take up a motion about the policy itself and your discussion is part of that, that piece. Diane?
I move that the Board adopt the revisions to the Board Policy P1464 as presented in Agenda Item 4B to be effective and force with the beginning of the 2023-24 school year.
I second that.
Okay, it was, motion was made by Diane and seconded by Ernestine to adopt this policy. Now, more discussion? As, as written, the, the motion is as written. So, you presented something else and we'd need a motion to change it.
Yes, so, do I counter her motion?
You, you would.
Amend her motion?
We would vote on her motion first and then we'd come back and vote on yours.
Okay.
Okay? Is there further discussion?
Can we clarify what Kathy's verbiage would be in her motion?
The way I have it, and you tell me if I'm wrong, Kathy. The last, if you look at the policy statement itself, that's bold at the top of the sheet, the very last sentence of that says, "Violation of the rules and regulations may be subject to disciplinary action and reported to local law enforcement if appropriate." What Kathy wants to substitute is violations of the rules and regulations will be subject to disciplinary action and, and may be reported to local law enforcement if appropriate. Okay? So, that's the change, but we vote on the first one first because that's what the motion is on the floor. Before we vote, I would like to make a comment on this. I guess I'm thinking across the Board at all levels because we're talking about little beady people as well as our seniors in high school. And, you know, sometimes it's a learning situation because of maturity and you're doing something, but it's really not disciplinary. It's to help them understand the rules. Because when our kindergarteners come in, they don't understand the rules at all and they've got to figure out the new system and be able to fit into it. If we require subject to disciplinary, they will get subject to disciplinary action, that raises that learning process exponentially for teachers. Because then they're having to report every time they do some kind of corrective action with the child in a learning process. The way it's written here is with "may," we can cover all ages and all learning abilities with the policy. I think it actually, the "will" restricts us more than the "may" does. That's my opinion. Ernestine?
I want to argue with myself. Because I can see that the "will" disciplinary problem might issue, it doesn't have to be a heavy, the teacher could just say, "Put the phone away."
Well, but this covers all the things in this policy, not just phones.
Yeah.
Because this policy has a lot of other things besides phone.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. But it's ironic, as I was preparing and you were talking, I got a phone call on my little watch that's new to me from the Speech and Hearing Clinic at WSU. And if I had been a student in class, I would have been disciplined. Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all.
You're not supposed to receive phone calls in class.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so I would've been a naughty.
Well, you know, you're not gonna be disciplined if you get a phone call. You're gonna be disciplined if it rings, if it's out of your backpack, if it's exposed, if you talk on it, if you text on it. That's what I think this policy is talking about.
Well, and please remember, this, the, the words in bold cover the whole policy, which covers bullying, it covers cyberbullying, it talks about parents, it's got lots of things in it. It's not until we get to the second page under fourteen with personal electronic devices that cell phones is the directive of this policy. So, this is a much bigger policy than just cell phones. Julie was next.
Well, I, I just wanna reinforce what you're saying, Cheryl, that with the last two words of that policy that says "if appropriate," and so, you know, that gives a specifier to a teacher, an administrator, you know, some adult is gonna discern the specifics of the situation, the specifics of the age of the child, and determine what is appropriate discipline in this situation. So, I, I like the policy as written.
Okay, as written, okay.
There's no consequences at all on this policy. Is there? If there is, tell me, because I, I couldn't find one. So, it just says prohibited, 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 prohibited. Okay, that's fine. What child is gonna really look at prohibited? I mean, if we're trying to teach them boundaries, don't you think that there's gotta be some sort of discipline or consequence? Yes, age-appropriate consequence. It's not the same consequence across the board. A high schooler will get a different consequence. I mean, I don't know what it could be. No gum chewing, I don't know. I mean, the teacher can then specify, and I also wanna be assured that our teachers are gonna follow this. You get one teacher that's like, eh, go ahead, who cares? You know, we have to really instill this into our teachers.
That's part of the reason that we wanna do this in one read, so that the staff can be, receive training on this before school starts, when students arrive.
I agree with that.
Okay, any other discussion? Diane?
I think one of the things that we have to consider when we're making policies is how large our district is, and there's too many nuances to make a, an extremely restrictive policy. I understand what you're saying, Kathy, about there's not written disciplinary actions, but that's, as a policy, we're leaving that up to the professionals in the buildings to weigh in those nuances, to weigh in those different circumstances, to use their adult discernment to assess the situation and make appropriate action. It doesn't mean that if those, any of these policies are broken, that nothing happens. It's, we're, we're leaving that flexibility up to the building administrators, to the teachers in the classroom, and not in our position. We're not the ones in the classroom dealing with this. So, we're laying out a framework to be used for them to use that discernment. So, I, I am in favor of the, the verbiage and the wording that the current policy states and the new additions, not the amended additions, because I, I do trust our building administrators and our classroom teachers to use their professional judgment and discernment when dealing with these situations.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion, Stan?
Thank you. I'm also very interested in keeping the word "may" in there instead of "will." If you look through all our policies, we have built-in flexibility on all policies in order to, because we can't anticipate every single problem that would come up. We cannot write policies on discipline like a prison code. We are gonna be dealing with human beings here, and we have to get some flexibility. Plus, I don't think you're gonna want to, it's gonna take a while for this policy to actually start taking root. I don't think you're gonna wanna build in three thousand disciplinary hearings over things that people with common sense could use. So, I would also approve this policy and keeping it as written.
Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. The motion was made by Diane and seconded by Ernestine. Are we ready to vote? Okay, the motion that's on the floor accepts the policy as written for everything in it as written, with no changes in wording. So, that's what we're voting on. All right, if you agree with keeping the policy as written and presented to us by the administration, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, next item.
Next item, under Operations, Kansas Association of School Boards, Delegate Assembly Number One and Number Two.
Okay, and Julie has represented the board as our delegate to the Assembly, and I would like to still recommend that she continue to do that. And she is willing, she's, I've talked to her, and she's willing to do that. So, do I hear a motion that we approve Julie as our delegate for the?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ernestine, seconded by Stan, that we appoint Julie as our delegate to, to the Delegate Assembly for Kansas Association of School Boards. If you agree with that, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Next item.
Next item, under Finance, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget authorization to publish notice of hearing.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Did we appoint anybody for the delegate for Assembly Number Two?
She covers both.
Okay, she's gonna cover both.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, I should've said that. Number one says they cover both, and number two, they, so she will cover both one and two. Yes.
Hold your water, I'm confused, because one of those is a legislative thing, and I thought that that was, yeah, there's a delegate assembly and a legislative assembly.
Well, they're both.
The second one is a legislative assembly, and I talked to Patrick, and I thought that that was for.
Yeah, the, there, we have the option of appointing either the same member to serve on the Legislative Recommendations Committee and the Delegate Assembly, or to appoint separate board members to serve.
Okay, because, because this just says Delegate Assembly in both of them on our Agenda Item, it doesn't say Legislative. But one of them is a Legislative?
Delegate Assembly Number Two is for the twenty twenty-three KSB Legislative Recommendations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, that's my fault, I missed that. Thank you very much, I was looking down below.
I move that we appoint Ernestine Crable as our delegate for Assembly Number Two for the Legislative, since she's on the Legislative Committee.
Yes. Moved by Stan, seconded by Hazel, thank you for that correction, I appreciate it. If you agree with Julie goes to the Delegate Assembly One, and Ernestine goes to the Delegate Assembly Two, so please raise your right hand. Passes seven zero. Thank you, thank you for that correction.
And I would welcome anybody to accompany me who's interested.
Okay, now, Susan. Thank you, sorry about that.
Good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. I would first open with a couple clarifications related to Ms. Bond's question on Prime Fit. The four thousand dollar item was for summer stealth, related to the stealth programs at Cleveland, Ortiz, Washington, and White. The second item was for the summer safari program. Okay, now, back to the business of the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We are down to the final stretch. We are at our last three steps in the budgetary process. Are we? I'm up, but I don't see it reflect on the board. Hold on one minute.
A technology problem, imagine that.
Always great to have the Chief Information Officer ready at hand.
It's always nice to be needed, Rob, right?
Okay, so, today is the Notice of Budget and Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing. Then, we will be moving to the actual hearing on August twenty-eighth, and then finally, hopefully, September eleventh, we are ready to put this particular budget to bed and adopt the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We will quickly recap kind of the steps we've taken to get here, and we'll start with the needs assessment process that we discussed at our meeting in July. Our Budget Director, Addie Lowell, walked you through several of these steps, where we discussed how the needs assessments were conducted, how the board had received those needs assessment and reviewed the assessment data, and then we discussed specifically how those needs assessments actually drove budgetary requests. We have also put out on the district's website, the, all the needs assessment data per school. It can be found by going to our main webpage, usd259.org, and at the bottom, there's a banner. If you click on the District Budget, you will be led to the Finance page, and on the left side, you will see the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Needs Assessment link, and it will take you to every school's needs assessment data. And so, that is out there and ready to go. And additionally, we talked about the state assessment requirements. We reminded the board of our state assessment results from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then we discussed the three mandatory questions related to state assessments. The first question was, what barriers must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency at Level Two? We came to that consensus that really the barriers at the student, staff, parent, and community level really have not substantively changed from last year. But specifically, the needs assessments drew our attention to four specific needs, four specific barriers that were causing some issues with the majority of our schools. That included the child study team ratios, paraprofessional training, parent and community involvement, and attendance problems. So, to that end, we provided the board a very specific set of budgetary actions and recommendations, reallocations that we've made in this particular budget to address some of those barriers. In addition to all the normal items that we cover, such as recruitment and retention of staff, we did share that we were taking the, the counselors and social workers and putting those into regular budgetary lines, moving them out of one-time ESR funding. We are piloting an attendance initiative, we covered, and you approved that at the last board meeting. We have some family engagement projects that are happening within the ESR funding that is still available, and then we have various PD initiatives ongoing, which will include specifically some paratrainning initiatives. So, we do believe that we've reallocated the budget appropriately for those needs addressed in the needs assessment, in addition to handling utility increases and property casualty increases and wage packages. And finally, the third question, if the budgetary actions are implemented, estimate the amount of time it will take for all students to achieve proficiency above a Level Two. And the board had kind of led us to, let's stay the course for at least another year so that we can see some comparative data as far as how we're progressing on our plan. So, that, all of that packaged up brings us to the total budgetary maximum authority that we want to set for fiscal year twenty-four, and that number is nine hundred and seventy million dollars and change, as you can see, nine hundred and seventy thousand, million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars, compared to the amended adopted budget from fiscal year twenty-three, that's almost a twenty million dollar decrease. That's primarily because even though our funds are going up because of a base aid increase, our ESR funds that we budgeted is, are coming significantly down. In fiscal year twenty-three, we budgeted all ESR two and ESR three funds that were available. We didn't use them all, so we are now down to about half of that amount. So, we're, we're at about seventy-eight million dollars and change left in primarily ESR three. So, we will continue here, this, this fiscal year, we've seen the, the budgetary decrease. Next year, you'll see a significant budgetary decrease as we end ESR funding. I've included for you the Code ninety-nine. This is what gets published in the newspaper. So, I do wanna draw your attention to how this form works. We've covered this before, but it's always a good refresher, since we really only look at this once a year. The first two columns of data, the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, and the twenty-two, twenty-three columns are actual expenditures. That's specifically what we spent dollars on and where we spent them. It's not specifically what, but the categories of what. The final columns, the proposed budget, are budgetary numbers, and as we've shared with the board many times, we budget on the high side, so that if, as student changes occur, if we, if we enroll more, if we enroll less, whatever's happening in those various count points throughout our fiscal year, including how much special ed dollars we get that we don't find out until May, a lot of things transpire during the year. We budget high. So, as you're looking through this form, you have actual, actual, and then budget, you're going to look at the budget and thinking, oh, my gosh, what are they, they're exploding. And that's not really what's happening. It's we are budgeting high to allow for that legal max in each fund, knowing that in reality, all of those numbers will come down. But we won't, shouldn't unless something strange happens, like we have this gigantic blow up of at-risk free lunch students like we did last year. We should be good under this budget and not have to amend. The mil levy, I've given you the historical since eleven-twelve. You can see, for the most part, since the seventeen, eighteen school year, we've been what I would call relatively flat. Slight decreases where we've been able to make them. You can see in that, those final two years where we've fallen under fifty-two. Last year, we were at fifty-one point four, four. This year, the budget is coming in at fifty-one point nine five six. That is a slight increase, but still under fifty-two mils, and it's primarily occurring because of the local option budget, which we're gonna talk a little bit more about. Again, we, we showed you some of this data in slightly different forms last week, but we thought it was good to kind of go through it one more time. You have two years of, well, three years of actual mil levy data here, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. In the final two columns, we provide you what we provided to Sedgwick County as far as what we believed our revenue neutral rate publication would, where we were, thought we might land. Again, the challenges for school districts, particularly large ones, is the timeline. When we receive budget forms in July, and for, again, for a close to one billion dollar budget, to turn all of the data needed in two weeks to give final mil levy numbers for us is close to impossible. So, we try to get as close as we can, knowing that we have to at least go in a little bit high, because we can't go in any higher than what we publish in the paper. And so, that's essentially what we did. We published at fifty-two point one eight two, knowing that, we know the LOB was going to have to come up. That we knew. And we're, we're gonna share that why here in just about two slides. But we didn't know exactly where we were gonna land, because we were still missing a couple key components. We talked about that. So, where we've landed finally in the budget that we want to, to put forth to our taxpayers, we wanna publish the notice of hearing, would have twenty mils in the general fund, sixteen point one seven four mils in the LOB. Will come significantly down in special liability to offset some of that LOB increase, so we'll go from point nine six two down to point one. Capital stays at eight, bond interest stays at seven point six eight two, and we arrive at the final fifty-one point nine five six. We had shared this chart last time, we'll share it again. The USD mil rate change on a hundred thousand dollar house will increase that taxpayer's bill by five dollars. The assessed valuation impact, assuming an eight percent increase on their property values, which was the average for Sedgwick County, will increase their taxes by fifty dollars. So, our impact is five, the assessed valuation impact is fifty, for a total increase of fifty-five Okay, so, let's talk a little bit about the LOB. We had, we had shared with the board, and the board kind of gave us, gave us kind of the, the marching orders, if you will, is we want to maximize a wage package for staff. Obviously, we want to pay our, our utility bills and take care of property casualty and all those things that happen. So, we had shared that that would require us to continue to stay at thirty-three percent on the LOB. We would have to continue to max the, our authority of the general fund in the supplemental, supplemental operating budget, which is the, we call the LOB. At that point, when we say, yes, we wanna maximize the LOB, it's a formula. We, we don't have any control of what the mil levy is, because it really is a very strict mathematical formula. It is, the LOB is, when you have thirty-three percent of that general fund, you let, you subtract your cash from that number, you subtract what the from that number, you subtract what the state's going to pay you in aid, and that's the difference you need in taxes. And you plug it into the formula and it spits out a mil levy. And it, it really is as, as straightforward as that. So we, if we want, didn't want to max that 33%, you could come down on the mil, but then we start to jeopardize the wage package and being able to pay all of those fixed costs that we covered at the last meeting. And so that's why we are recommending the budget at 33% for the LOB, which will bring up the LOB mil levy slightly because of the fact that we used up cash in the LOB for this past fiscal year, primarily for two reasons. One is, and you saw it on the board reports, utilities were significantly higher. And so we ate into some of those cash reserves. Two, because we couldn't amend the local option budget, like we amended the general fund, we had to actually increase our transfer to at-risk out of the LOB because that's statutory. We have a mandatory increase out of the LOB into at-risk, and it's proportionate to how much money is coming out of the general fund into at-risk. Again, it's a mathematical formula. So we had to increase that formula without being able to go increase the revenues in that fund. It ate into cash reserves. So cash reserves went down, obviously with, with the general fund increasing, the LOB max increases too. So those two components are driving that increase on the property tax. And you can see a little, by the little picture, hopefully it makes sense, as our carryover cash and state aid are heavier, right, we, we can assess less property tax. As our carryover cash and our state aid reduce, for whatever reason, then the property tax has to be higher, has to be more. Here is the very rough draft of these, of our wheel that shows how much we support students in our operating budget. It's not the, our pretty one that we normally produce, we haven't quite got there yet. So you, you get the Excel version right now. But we are still at 86% of our operating budget in direct support of students. I think Addie has shared, and I, I concur with her. We take a lot of pride, and I hope the board does too, in this particular chart. Because really, it does show that where we focus our dollars, whether they're local tax dollars, or whether it's state aid, or whether it's federal dollars, we are focusing those in the classroom, primarily in instruction at 53%, followed by nurses, social workers, counselors, psychologists, speech paths, and all the supporting staff at 10%. And then you've got food service and transportation and all of the supporting functions that need, that are needed to keep schools operational. You have obviously your business and support, your general administration, at smaller pieces, less than five, or right at 5%. And obviously, facility maintenance, which you could argue is sort of direct support, is at nine. So again, we, we're very part of this chart, and we, we appreciate the fact that the board, you know, directs us to push the budget in direct support of students. So as we kind of wrap up, you have a fiscal year '24 budget that is based on ongoing post-COVID baseline enrollment. We did receive the 5% base aid increase that all schools received as far as the per pupil amount, but we are still being partially offset by a decline in enrollment. This year's budget is based on fiscal year '22 enrollment. We are utilizing the full 33% available to us in the supplemental general fund in order to balance the budget. The mil levy will increase slightly. The overall mil will change by .472 mils, which is primarily a function of the LOB going up. But we did offset that some with a decrease in special liability. And then again, all remaining federal COVID relief funds, our ESSR funds, are budgeted in this fiscal year, reminding the board that those funds have to be used by September 30th. And really, at this point, we are well on track to hopefully be done with most of it, if not close to all of it by June 30th of this fiscal year. And with that, we are looking at an April 28th date for our public budget and revenue neutral rate hearing, certain, August, did I, what did I say? April? Oh, well, see, I'm already backwards. I'm already, or I'm planning for next year, one of the two. August 28th. And budgetary resources will be available on, on our webpage, on the district's financial webpage. You've got the needs assessments out there already. The actual budget will be posted next week.
Okay.
And before I make my recommendation, looks like there's a question.
Well, go ahead and do your recommendation.
Okay, I'll do my recommendation. So administration is recommending that the board establish six o'clock PM on August 28th, I got the formal, formal recommendation correct, August 28th, 2023, as the public budget and revenue neutral rate hearing for the 2023-24 budget. And with that, I'm going to actually invite our budget director up here to help me answer any in-the-weeds questions you may have.
Okay. Stan?
I only had one question, and then I thought I would make the motion to, just for the base, to get started on this. Superintendent Beilefeld, I got a quick question about the district goal of decreasing the percentage of students performing at level one between 1% and 5%. My understanding is, this last year, we decreased it by slightly over 1%. And my question is, at what timeframe do we get this year's number? Is it the same time that we'll be publishing or producing next year's building need assessments?
Yeah.
Because that's when I got, that's when I got that information this year. Is that the regular timeline for whether or not we're meeting those goals?
Not exactly, no. We started the needs assessment process in site councils in the spring. We don't get the state assessment results until almost the last week of school, somewhere in mid-May. So not exactly, no.
So, so we will be late in the budget process next year when we know whether or not we've met 1% or whether we've increased our, that goal for next year?
Uh, yes and no. When I referred to the needs assessment, I was talking about the kind of the building needs assessment process. The, the buildings won't have their state assessment data when they go through that process. We will spend the summer, pretty much all summer with Susan and Addie, right, you know, going through what the building said their needs were, and then also having the state assessment data that we could use to look at to help form and shape the creation of the budget. So I don't know if that answers your question, but Susan did make reference to the timing of these things. Sometimes when Topeka makes rules for us, they don't really understand the implications of the win, and the timing isn't great on some of these things, but. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, my, I guess what the goal is, I, I would like the public to understand about what the timeline is on moving kids out of one.
Okay, so I may, I may try to paraphrase what we're after. The annual process of the needs assessment.
Right.
Really is, is a global list of questions, right? It isn't limited to just us, how, how are we going to improve on state assessments? They're looking at social, emotional, they're looking at kind of those rose capacities. So there's a whole laundry list of, of related questions to those capacities. And as the, as the principals are with their site councils and their building leadership teams are discussing those, it's not so critical that they have this year's state assessments. It would be nice, right? It would be nice to say, are we, of the things we made decisions on last year, are those bearing fruit on the state assessment? The principals won't be able to do that as well when they're working on these needs assessments because the timing doesn't work. But district-level administration would have then, here's what the schools say they need related to the, kind of the whole student, here's the state assessment data that we received at the end of May. How do we then put all those pieces together to reallocate the budget in order to move the needle on state assessments, in addition to all the other needs? Because again, those rose capacities don't specifically state, you have to, you have to be at a level two on state assessments. There's a whole laundry list of items. State assessment level two is not there. So it really is a combination of meeting students' needs and doing well or better on the state assessment process.
And that's our goal, is to get more kids out of one.
Well, this, this.
Not the rose standard.
Right. The state wants us, through the budgetary process, to say, what's it going to take? Not how much money, but of the money we're giving you, where can you reallocate it in order to get those kids to level two? And that's the process we just went through, which is, we are doing some reallocations that should help schools on both sides of the, of that equation, where students are having issues socially, emotionally, or they have other, you know, they're having trouble getting to school. Hopefully, if we're fixing some of that, we're going to see it in state assessments. We're hoping that's all related, and it will, what we're doing will serve both purposes.
Let me see if I can simplify this, and just for the public information, we've always done building need assessments. They've just been informal. The legislature came along and said you need a formal process of assessing building needs. We've done that the last two years. We are now entering into the third year. We have a goal of 50% of students performing at level three and four by 2030. We have two years now of, well, actually only one year, of knowing that we've had a slight increase over 1%. And so next year, we will have a two-year timeframe. We will get that information in either spring or about this time next year. And at that point, we can decide whether or not that goal of 50% of students performing at three or four by 2030 is realistic or not.
Correct.
Okay. And Cheryl, I'd like to, just to get the discussion moving, I would like to move that the board approved the publication of the 23-24 notice of hearing that sets the annual budget hearing and hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate for 6:00 PM, August 28th, at North High?
Correct, North High.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Stan and seconded by Ernestine, discussion. Kathy?
I have some questions. You're so good at helping us. Okay, either one of you can do this. Can you tell me what the remaining ESSR funds have been real, reallocated to and what initiatives? And, and I'll tell you why I'm asking. There is a program that I'm very passionate about called Prime Fit. And the data reflects that it is a very successful program for behaviors in some of our schools. And so I'm just, want to know where funds are being allocated to and why Prime Fit got some taken away.
Sure, so I'll try to recap some of what, I think we kind of went over our last plan for ESSR funds in October, and we plan to come back to you with an updated plan and demonstrate where our spending has occurred thus far, probably in the same timeframe, September or October of this year as well. All the funds were planned at that time, and they still are fully planned. So a majority of the spending remaining in ESSR III is related to maintaining our operations, which includes, you'll remember, we took a tremendous budget cut in 2022 when we took that, that massive decline in enrollment and waiting. And so we've been slowly trying to use ESSR funds to make sure that we didn't have to trim the system down because of those COVID-related enrollment decline. So that's still a, a big planning piece of ESSR funds. All of our programs, instructional and student support programs, have allocations that they have made individualized plans on based on the priorities of the district, recommendations from building administration for those at-risk programs that have done the good things that you're talking about, like Prime Fit, our tutoring programs, Revolution Prep, Acceleration Academy, are a couple I can think of off the top of my head. So they're continuing to prioritize the buildings that still have needs related to that learning loss, and, and we're still implementing those programs in those individualized program allocations. We've got the custodial contract that you all approved the last time is being paid for by ESSR III funds. There's still a tremendous amount of facilities work, which I will commend you all on, it has been a tremendous investment long-term with these funds. So that's still a big portion of that budget as well. So those are some of the bigger categories.
Can some of these programs be considered for at-risk? And, because I noticed the at-risk on that chart, it's actually increased. The monies have increased into that fund. So can some of these initiatives receive at-risk if they are approved for that?
So this is, we kind of had started to implement that in the building needs assessment process. So all the building administrators were invited to request these, the, the personnel and the services that we've implemented using these one-time ESSR funds into their building needs assessments to tell us that this is a critical service to my school, and if I lost it, it would be a barrier for me to be able to have my students achieving proficiency on state assessments. So they all had those opportunities to give us that information and to help us prioritize these initiatives because we have a tremendous amount. I know I gave you high-level categories, but, you know, we had almost 1,000 positions being touched by ESSR funds, almost 600 lines on our application for ESSR III. So I give you five things, it's not as, quite as simple as that for our large district. So there's still a lot to prioritize. At-risk funds are increased in the budget this year, you're absolutely correct. Last year, we had a change in some legislation that allowed us to capitalize on that direct certification of students through Medicaid. We already are getting information that as families have fallen off of that, that there's still, there's a high percentage that are not requalifying just because of timing, income, you know, missing deadlines. So we're hopeful that that number stays flat, but we won't have a good projection on what room we have in at-risk funds to take additional expenditures until we get some more information from our enrollment audit, so.
So we're going to pass this budget, not knowing if we're going to be able to use these at-risk funds for the year?
Welcome to school finance.
Okay. As long as I understand, okay. Thank you.
Oh, do you?
Going back to slide 15, talking about the carryover cash, there's usually a lot of questions over why we have balances in our accounts. Could you further explain carryover cash?
We'll start specifically to the LOB, and then if we need to go further, we can. So when, to Ms. Bond's earlier point, we pass a budget really with somewhat limited information, right? So we don't know yet what enrollment is going to look like. We really won't know, we'll know some idea on 9/20, we'll have some numbers. But those numbers will be audited down, usually audited down, sometimes audited up, but usually audited down based on, okay, you recorded them, but they weren't really there, right? So they, we get a little attendance issue, so. And then we don't get that information until January, February. So we are passing a budget here in the summer, and all through the course of next year, those numbers will continue to change and tweak along the way. When we, but we have to pass and pass a mil rate in August slash September. So sometimes, and this happened particularly in, in the year that we experienced COVID, we taxed, and then the enrollment kind of dropped, right? So, and we didn't know, we didn't anticipate that those students would not return. So we were taxing on the fact that we, we thought we'd have 46,000 students, and really we had 44,000 students. So you can't, at that point, go in and adjust the mil levy. So it's, and essentially what, in that year, we overtaxed more, we got more than we needed based on the fact that our local option budget changed and was reduced. And so then that, that cash just has to sit there until we do the next year's budget and say, oh, okay, here's your new 33% of the general fund, hey, you've got $4 million of leftover cash, so that $4 million will go to offset next year's mil rate. And so you can see then, we end up kind of seesawing depending on what's happening in enrollment, how good our estimates are. And that has been a little bit more challenging kind of post-COVID. We think we're, we've now got enough trend data that we can start looking, here's two years post-COVID, three years post-COVID, five years post-COVID. Plus, what will also be helpful to us is when we get the next demographic information report that's coming to the board, we can utilize some of that data and do some longer-term projections. Okay, here's what we think it's going to look like, so that we can kind of get into that, that, that planning a little closer. Because right now, it's just been kind of up, down, up, down, up, down, and that's why we're seeing that teeter totter in the LOB. The other cash balances, of course, this one I will get, I get a little passionate about cash balances, right? Because, you know, in, as a, as a personal taxpayer, right, I want people to have safety nets. If, because that gets difficult if your hot water heater goes out, or your car stalls and it needs a new transmission, and you don't have any dollars to go that are unallocated to your mortgage and your electric bill and your food bill and all the other bills you have. If there's nothing left that's not allocated, you're, you're going to your mom and dad or, you know, some friends and begging for money. Or you're putting it on a credit card, which we can't do, we can't charge, right? We can't charge money we don't have. So we have to have some funds. So, we have to have some funds that are truly rainy-day, emergency-type funds. And so, we've got in our contingency reserve, that thirty-one million dollars, that is about one state aid payment for us, doesn't cover a full month of payroll, or just covers a full month of payroll, not that, not the benefits attached to it, but about that. So, I feel, I feel we're in a good, not a great, but a good spot on contingency reserve, related to the fact that we had been as low as ten million dollars a few years back. And ten million dollars for a budget our size is very scary. So, we've kind of worked our way up to the thirty million dollars. Every other fund we have that has a cash balance, there is a plan for those dollars, particularly if they are significant. And textbooks is a good example, right? If we have dollars sitting aside in textbooks, it's because we have a five-year plan on adoptions that are coming to the board for approval. And in this particular year, you may get two large ones this upcoming year. And then, two years after that, you may get another one or two large ones. So, and again, if textbook adoptions were a million dollars, that'd be one thing. But they tend to be six or seven million dollars by the time you add in all of the, the workbooks, the online curriculum components, textbook pieces, the, kind of these whole packages. They're, they're expensive. And we don't have enough flexibility in the budget year to year to handle those kind of large adoptions. So, we take, where all the dollars that fall out in various budgets, from maybe a position wasn't hired over here, and maybe we didn't buy a piece of equipment over here, and we roll that and we go, okay, that's going to go to textbooks. Because we're not budgeting much in textbooks year over year. What, two, maybe two million dollars in textbooks annually? And that, that's really, takes care of our consumables. We are not budgeting for curriculum adoptions. We're using cash to plan for those. And, you know, the general fund can't have a cash balance, so it doesn't. The LOB is based on what is your authority in the fund, and how much did you levy, and what could you not spend? At-risk specifically, we left some dollars on the table in at-risk at the end of the fiscal year. We could have moved more out of ESER into at-risk, that would, that we could have done that. We decided, let's leave it in at-risk, because we knew we wanted to be somewhat aggressive with a wage package. Didn't know exactly what that was going to look like, but that's why, let's put some, have some money over there to help with, because again, what, what are we spending out of at-risk? Teacher salary. So, we wanted to be able to make sure we could cover those expenditures. The rest of the funds, other than health insurance and capital outlay, are relatively small, and bond and interest is pretty, is about fifty, fifty million and change right now. Not enough to pay the two-hundred-and-seventy-seven million we owe, but we are accumulating cash in order to make those payments every year. But capital outlay, obviously, you've heard a lot about that and why that fund desperately needs to have some carryover money, because otherwise, it can't do any projects in the fall if it doesn't have a cash balance. We don't get funding from that fund until January and February. So, there, I mean, there is a reason for every single fund we have and why there's a cash balance in that fund. And anyone that would love to, love to deep, do a deeper dive into that, I would be happy to meet with them one-on-one and sit down and cover exactly what those plans are in every fund, because we have them.
So, if anybody has any further questions on cash balances, contact Susan Willis.
Absolutely. And I would love to have that conversation.
Thank you, Susan, for answering that, because there, there usually are a lot of questions.
Sure, there is, and there should be.
Right, because there are large balances, but to cover out of our contingency plan, one month of payroll, mostly, it's, that's overwhelming amount. So, my next question, and it might be a little presumptuous right now, but do we know what our early enrollment numbers are looking like for this year? Are, are they up-down? Or do we even know at this point in time with our student enrollment?
Well, I can somewhat answer that. We have enrollment going on now, so we are making some teacher adjustments per building based on, you know, this building looks like it's going to need an extra teacher, this building doesn't. And the elementary office does that kind of as needed. As of the first day of school, pretty much, we run every, you know, daily attendance pretty much up until September twentieth. So, we'll have a decent feel next week, but even that isn't, like, like Susan said, it isn't exact until, it's not, you know, it's somewhat exact on the twentieth, and then.
And then it moves from there.
More exact later, yeah, so.
Okay. And then, my, my next note is just there, since the budget has to do with academic outcomes in putting dollars in classrooms, and I thank you for giving it special attention to that. But there does seem to be a disconnect in how we measure success. And so, as we go through the new strategic plan, I would like to see more of an alignment within the district with academic outcomes and how we measure that and how we look at that, because I understand the board's going to look at academic outcomes differently than a classroom teacher. But how do we measure success in a district this size? And we want academic achievement. How do we, it's kind of a messy process of how we measure that, but it would be nice to have more alignment with not just state assessments, but also with the FastBridge scores, getting down more into the classroom level of teachers see what they see, but then we're measuring state assessments. And so, have more alignment with that, so that way, the public can see that the dollars are going to classroom, and we're seeing academic outcomes improve at, at a dramatic rate, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have a motion on the floor. It was, the motion was made by Stan and seconded by Ernestine, that we allow the budget to be published, or have a hearing on August the twenty-eighth, public hearing. So, I'm going to call a question. Those that agree with the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. You have the right to have the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy, that we adjourn this meeting. Please raise your right hand if you agree. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. We'll see you on August the twenty-eighth.